We'll call the meeting to order. Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for the opportunity to meet this evening, and we ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom. We pray for peace and understanding, love and humility, and we ask that those recovering from a senseless act of violence find peace in your grace, in your son's name. Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Thank you. Announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the commission of a community meeting that's scheduled for Thursday, February 22nd, that's tomorrow, at 7:00 PM. It's at the Salem Baptist Church in the Family Life Center at 4044 Plank Road, and it is for a proposed rezoning on Courthouse Road adjacent to the Giant. And the proposal is for 16.4 acres to be rezoned from Residential 1 to planned development housing, to develop an age-restricted residential community that includes 22 detached homes, 18 attached villas, and 200 apartments. And that's located in the Salem Voting District. That's my only announcement.
Well, excuse me, may I? Rwanda?
Yes.
This property is already zoned for what?
It's zoned Residential 1.
And what?
So, single-family detached homes.
So, they could have a subdivision there by right?
They could, yes. Not a very large number of units, but single-family detached homes only.
Thank you.
Moving on to review and approval of the minutes of February 7th, 2018. We do have a revision to the minutes. I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review those. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll take a motion to approve the revised minutes.
So, move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well. Moving on to, I don't think we have any other unfinished business. We'll move on to the work session.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, the work session is on the MU ordinance, and it's intended to accomplish four goals. First is to have an overview of the MU ordinance. Second is an update on projects that are approved under the MU classification. Third is to provide the commission with some staff observations related to evaluating MU rezoning applications and site plans, and finally to receive input and information from the commission regarding the MU ordinance. My presentation will be brief, and so most of our time can be spent receiving information from you all. So, the mixed-use ordinance was adopted on September 25th, 2012, with the purpose and intent to provide a flexible approach to development, to include infill and redevelopment by allowing a variety of interrelated and compatible commercial, office, residential, civic, recreational, and entertainment uses in a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood setting based on, but not limited to, the following principles: connectivity of the road networks, connected pedestrian networks, reduced front and side yard building setbacks, mixed-use neighborhoods, including mixes of housing types, and respecting the character of adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhoods. The idea that the street networks create good internal circulation and blends with the existing street network to preserve capacity on the existing roads, and also to provide internal capture. The scale and layout of the projects should allow and encourage pedestrian activity. The reduced bulk standards, the side yard and front yard setbacks, is intended to help form the shape of the development from its first physical appearance. And the fourth, the mixing of neighborhoods, was to encouraging a mixing of housing types with complementary commercial uses. And also, the fifth principle there is to encourage or allow for infill development. The mixed-use ordinance can be used to achieve infill development. The MU ordinance has five subcategories, which range in intensity, and as the numbers ascend, the intensity increases. So, the MU 1, 2, and 3 districts are your least intense uses. The MU 4 and 5 are your more intense uses, where you could have the greatest mixes of uses in those two districts. The development standards, in an effort to achieve a physical form that comports with the purpose and intent of the district, the ordinance has development standards that guide the physical makeup of the project. Depending on the MU district, this includes building types, lot area and width, setback, building heights, build-to zones, and open space. In addition, the ordinance sets out parking calculations for specific uses, street types, block lengths, and uses and special uses in each sub-district. So, in each sub-district, you are allowed, as in a traditional zoning classification, uses by special use. As I noted, the ordinance was adopted in 2012, and right now, there are six approved projects under the MU: Spotsmane Courthouse Village, Crossroads Station, New Post, South Point Landing, Jackson Village, and Alexander's Crossing. And I'll give you a brief synopsis on each of those. So, Spotsmane Courthouse Village was approved in 2013 for MU 2, 3, 4, and 5. It allowed 1,500-plus residential units, single-family attached, detached, and multifamily. It had allowances for 536,000 square feet of commercial space. The project is currently under development, with Battlefield Square has five buildings with 66 multifamily units. Block 600 has 20,000 square feet of office and retail space, which is five buildings, and that also includes the five-story building which you see going up now, which is, has 16,000 square feet of commercial square footage on the first floor, with 53 multifamily units on top. The Merchant Square Building is also, the building that we are in right now, has 54,000 square feet of office space. Block 900, which is just over here on the bypass, or not the bypass, but the business, Courthouse Business, is the renovation of the Harris House, which currently has a childcare center in it, and then there's also 16,000 square feet of office space yet to be developed there. And then there's the Manor at Courthouse Commons, which is five single-family detached units. Dabney Woods, which is 30 single-family detached units, and then the Village at Courthouse Commons, which are a townhome project of, townhome and single-family detached, is 177 units. So, this is a page from the GDP for Courthouse Village, and as you can see, not a lot of detail, but this is what was presented as the potential road net for the project, road network for the project, identified with the spine roads as the dash line, and then the arrows indicating potential side streets that would come off of there. So, as it stated, currently under development, in the foreground there, you see the five-story building that is almost complete. You see the smaller grouping of buildings, which currently houses two restaurants, I think a financial services building, and antique shop, and a fitness center in that complex. And then in the aerial photograph of the Village Center, if you follow the mouse, this is for orientation purposes. Where the mouse is right now, this is the Merchant Square Building. The five-story building is here, and then these are the grouping of buildings I just spoke of that are in the foreground in this picture here. These apartment buildings here, front along Brock Road, and this is the entrance here. There are future plans, in the near future, I think, to have an additional building on this path side as well. This is the Courthouse Commons area, and as you can see, it's a townhouse development that's under construction. Just for orientation, this is the Public Safety Building, is in this general area right Crossroads Station was the first project approved using the MU classification, and it kind of set the tone for future application submissions. Crossroads Station was rezoned in 2013 for MU 5 on approximately 46 acres to allow for a maximum of 950,000 square feet of commercial space and 610 multifamily units. The project is currently under development with 587 multifamily units. And again, this is a page out of the GDP that, as you can see, shows the land base, and then it shows the road network. Again, another page from the GDP that depicted a little bit more detail, but there again, there was no commitment to this, and so ultimately, as it's developing, we have the apartment complexes, which are developing in this general area here, with the VRE parking lot in this area just across the street here, well, in this area. This is an aerial, and so you can see this large asphalt area is the VRE parking area. This is an industrial user here. This is an industrial user here, and then the Crossroads Station project is essentially in this area here. The portion that is under construction right now is in this general area right here, and like I said, this is the apartments. This is the fire station right here in this area there.
If I may interrupt you. All these developments you showed us here, the MU's here, they all have a certain amount of commercial?
They do.
In them, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I appreciate everything you're telling us, but do we not give MU zoning to other projects that aren't these, it's just two or three elements? Didn't we just pass one with some apartments and townhouses in it?
Each one, the last one we did was Jackson Vill, oh, I'm sorry, Alexander's Crossing, and it had a mix of uses.
Yeah, but we have approved mixed-use projects that weren't these. Have we not had people in here ask for a mixed use, and they just built houses and...
Yeah. These are the ones that were actually designated as mixed-use zoning.
Right.
There are other projects that have come in and been developed in the mixed-use land use of the comprehensive plan, but they had different zoning districts.
Okay. Well, when we signed on for this thing in 2012, when we wrote this, you guys wrote this thing, and presented it to us, we were under the impression that it had all MU development, it's going to have some element of commercial in it. Is that not true?
Mr. Thompson, if you give me a second, I can get to that, and I think we can have a discussion on that.
All right. Go ahead.
Okay. So, next was the New Post project, and as you can see, this is a page out of the GDP, and it was a pretty sparse GDP. It indicated a single spine road here, and then this road was existing at the time, and this is a road that leads to the soccer complex. That project was approved in 2013 with MU 1, 3, and 4, and it was on 188 acres, and it allowed for mixing commercial residential uses. The maximum number of residential uses was 510, and then there are 15 acres in this project that are designated for commercial development along Route 17 in this area here. Currently, it is under development, and there are apartments under development right now, which you see here in the foreground. There are townhouses also under development, and also, this picture here is a picture of the single-family houses that are currently under development. As a part of this project also, we are currently reviewing a site plan for 30,000 square feet, 30,000 square foot church, with also 32,000 square feet of general business development along Route 17. This area up in here that has been cleared when this photograph was taken is where, if you recall, as a part of this case, they came back and did an amendment to allow, to expand the lot widths for these two-acre lots that front along the river here. So, there are a number of residential uses that expand up along the river here.
On 17, there was a church?
There's a site plan submitted, yes, ma'am, for a church. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. So, South Point Landing was also an MU designation. It was done in 20, approved in 2014. It had an R designation as well as a MU designation. So, on your screen now, you see the page from the GDP, which there again is a bubble plan. Area F was identified as MU 5. Area D was R-12, and it's currently under development. That area D is where the Aberley Apartments are open now. This area here is the CarMax, and also under development on the area F side is the office building, a 36,000-square-foot office building. So, there again, the road network that was presented as a part of this application, as you can see, a dash line with arrows kind of indicating potential side streets coming off of it, not much detail. Here are an aerial photograph, and also a photograph of the 36,000-square-foot office building that is going up in South Point. And also, in this general area here, is another apartment complex called Oxford Square. That's 240 multifamily units going there in the MU side, and then right in here, kind of hidden behind this photograph, oops, sorry, are the Aberley Apartments that front along South Point Parkway.
All right. So, you're saying that that's apartments on one side? Office building, and beside that office building, there are more apartments going up?
Yes. Down in this general area here. Now, mind you, there's also, like I said, it's MU 5, so there can be additional commercial space there as well. So, this is the GDP from Jackson Village. Jackson Village was approved in 2015 for MU 5 on approximately 240 acres to allow a mix of commercial and residential uses. And as you can see, this GDP is probably the more detailed GDP that we received of those six cases that we've talked about so far. It allowed a total of 2,270 residential units with 298,000 square feet of commercial space. The project is currently under development. You have the Allure Apartment Complex, which is going on Land Bay B, as it was identified, and then you have the Orchard Village Project Apartment Project, which is going to Land Bay H, and that is 245 units. This is taken out of the GDP also for Jackson Village, and this was the road network, and as you can see, it's a little bit more detailed, identified public roads, private roads, residential streets, and byways. And as we noted, in this project, this orange road here is the main road that would eventually cross 95 to the next mixed-use project, which was Alexander's Crossing. That is correct. Most of these projects have a trigger that, once they reach a certain number of residential units, then there is a requirement for some amount of commercial space.
Then they can go?
That's correct. Yeah. So, you see the orange line here? Yeah. This eventually leads to a bridge that would extend across 95 and into what is the Alexander's Crossing's enabled project. There are triggers for both projects that dictate when they have to construct the spine road to that point.
Excuse me? And at that point, they'll build that bridge?
At that point, if the project develops, there should be sufficient money, or the county will build the bridge.
If you recall, yeah, this was part of the application I had issue with, was when that bridge was going to be built, if it was going to be built, because that is still not a done deal, if I understood correctly. I also believe they set aside some funding. I don't want to use the word proffer, but I think they set aside some funding for that bridge.
Yes. So far, they have paid a $1 million proffer. There was a trigger for a $1 million proffer for transportation. That has been paid, so that trigger was very early in the process. Other triggers for when they have to achieve certain things or provide that space, for example, for Jackson Village, they proffered a minimum of 25,000 square feet of non-residential uses, and there's a trigger for that. And then for building the road, there's a trigger that's based on their phasing of development, and they do have additional proffers that could go towards the building of that bridge, or for other transportation improvements in the area.
Right. So, it was a non-dedicated fund. We could use that?
Correct. It could be used at the county's discretion.
Yes.
May I ask another question? All right. So, we had, what's the other one? Not Jackson, but the other...
Alexander's Crossing.
Alexander's Crossing. Okay. Alexander's Crossing and Jackson Village, where they are supposed to build that bridge as they develop. So, we have Jackson Village that's building, and if they meet that trigger, and Alexander's Crossing does nothing, what happens?
I believe that, I know it's in Jackson Village proffer, and I'm pretty sure it's in Alexander's Crossing as well, that they would dedicate the right-of-way to the county for that spine road on that side, so that the county then could build the road to the bridge.
Where's the funding coming from?
Yeah. That's one of the issues, is if we get to that point, yes.
Issue, that's a big issue.
Yeah, it is. Yeah. All right. Keep moving.
Okay. So, the aerial photograph of Orchard, and then aerial photograph of the land bay for Jackson Village. And just for orientation's sake, the Orchard Village Project is here. This is the Pick-a-Part project here.
Yep.
And then you have Cosner here at the top, and then the Allure Project would be in this area here. And if you've been by there recently, you know that they've actually started clearing and started to construct that project. So, this is the GDP from the Alexander Crossing's case, and the topic of discussion, the last few minutes, the bridge, is in this general area here. So, Alexander's Crossing was approved in 2015 for MU 3 and 4 to allow for a mix of uses, including residential and commercial. It's approximately 700 acres, and the total unit count there allowed is 2,607. It's a mix of multifamily, single-family attached, single-family detached, and senior units with 1.5 million square feet of commercial space typically reserved for this general area here. Just for orientation's sake, the hospital is in this general area here.
Was the property, I forget which one it was, Alexander's or the other, that were going to proffer property for a fire station?
In Alexander's Crossing, there is some space up in this general area here that can be used for civic uses, so...
Including a fire station?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mr. Newhouse, I have to remember, because I'm trying to recall if the fire station, if it was just the land that ultimately got dedicated.
I believe it was just the land.
Yeah.
They were going to proffer the property. Yeah.
May I ask a question? They're building all these buildings, and you've already said they build to a certain amount, then they have to start developing the commercial. Is there, do we really have safety factors in place that will prevent them from continuing to develop and not touch the commercial? Not develop the commercial, or just stop, connect it, stop in the middle of this project short of the trigger and not do nothing? Can they do that?
Well, sure, that's always a risk, yes. It's always a risk.
Ask that question.
Yeah. I mean, we saw that happen when the economy downturned. There were a number of projects that just ceased to move forward. I mean, we had, you know, we had two drawers full of site plans that were approved where people just didn't come pick them up, because it just wasn't economically feasible to develop them at that time.
May I have a follow-up question? What if this guy develops, starts developing this thing, and runs into trouble like you just described, and leaves the project, and sells it to somebody else? Are they under the same?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
And I can tell you, Mr. Thompson, that's a comment that happens quite often on big projects.
Right. I know.
I can name a number of projects that have gone through, taken 20 years to build out, and you'd have at least three or four different developers that have taken up the mantle and continued on the project, so...
The proffers are recorded over in the clerk's office, so those proffers actually run with the land. And then we also, anytime anybody does any development, they have to come through planning and zoning for their site plans and plaits, and so we do a proffer review at each of those applications. So, we would catch, if there's any trigger coming, we'd be able to catch it, and we'd know you're either, A, able to move forward with this plan, or we have to put, you know, cease review because you have exceeded, or not exceeded, but you're hitting the ceiling of how many units you can have, and you now need to build that commercial.
So, in addition to... A question. Sure. Just on the commercial part to follow up. So, when they get to that trigger and they have to build the commercial, does that mean they just have to build the building, or does it have to be leased out? Does it have to be commercial in there? They just have to build the building. I mean, they have to make that space available for commercial uses. They just have to have the building there. They don't have to have it occupied. Okay. Thank you.
And just one more thing. At that point, they start paying commercial taxes, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, in addition to the cases that we've gone over, we have three cases that are currently in the review process. There's a Palmer's Creek Project, which is located across from Pick-a-Part on Route 1. It's 100, I mean, it's 25 acres, and it's currently zoned C3 and RU, and they are requesting to go to MU 5 for the development of 400 multifamily units with 40,000 square feet of commercial space. Then there's the Acquia 2,600 Project, which is a request to rezon 20 acres from C2 and R1 to MU 4 for 288 multifamily units with 12,000 square feet of commercial space, and this is located across from the Salem Library. And then there's the Roseland Development, which is a request to rezon 1 acre from R1 to MU 2 to develop 14 townhomes on Hudson's Road behind the Toyota dealership. And this is a classic case of infill development. When we talked about those principles in the mixed-use development, one of those principles was to integrate mixed-use, I mean, infill development, and so when this ordinance was adopted, we said at that time that we wanted a tool that could allow infill development, and this is that tool, is the MU district. There's not an open space requirement, which allows someone to buy a 1-acre piece of property and then put in 14 townhomes. Now, the considerations there are, like I said in those five principles, is they need to respect the character of the surrounding neighborhood, and so that's one of the things that we're looking at as a part of that project.
Do you know when they will be coming into the county for application?
They are under review, and each one of them is at a different stage. Palmer's Creek, I think, is under proffer review with the county attorney. I think it just went over. Roseland, we just sent them comments back. They are, have to address some comments. And then Acquia, we just met with them last, we did it at TRC, and they have to respond to the comments that they received. So, they're several months away on probably each of these cases.
We probably expect them this year. Is that a fair...
I would say certainly this year.
Okay.
Yes. Yes. So, staff observations related to the MU district. So, when the ordinance was adopted, it was done so with the intent and understanding that the district would provide flexibility and allow the market to dictate the timing of the elements of the project. So, the approved cases all have provisions that allow the users to move anywhere in the project with the appropriate MU classifications. And as staff has reviewed rezoning applications and begun to review site plans for the MU projects, the following list are some items that we've observed that could be addressed with some tweaks to allow some clarity to the development community and also to the citizens. And a couple of these items that I note on here are policy issues and not necessarily items that can be addressed through an ordinance amendment. So, that's something to think about as we move forward to look at this ordinance. There are, there's limited detail in the GDP, and that's kind of, can be a concern for staff, and I'll use the Jackson Village case as an example. So, we have this project now, it's, what would we say, 700 acres, and it's booked in right now by two apartment projects being done by two different builders. And so, that limited detail in the GDP does not lend to consistency across the entire project. So, if we end up, we could potentially end up with five or six different developers in the entire project and have five or six different looks in the project. So, it's incumbent upon, you know, the developer, if he has a real vision of what his project wants to be, and I'll use the Spotsmane Courthouse Village in that sense, they have a real vision and understanding of what they want to be, so you see a lot of consistency in how the project is put together. If you have another project where you have a developer who's not real clear on his vision, and... and allows parcels or out parcels to be taken down at different times, then you could end up without that consistency in detail, you could end up with different elements in the project not looking similar. So that's kind of an issue.
And those elements can be proffered?
Those elements can be proffered. And there are several ways to do that. I'll give you the Crossroads Stations case, when it came along, they had put forth a pattern book to kind of maintain that consistency. But the issue in that case was they didn't necessarily want to proffer the pattern book. So they said, we'll give you these, we'll show you all these great ideas, but we're not necessarily going to commit to those ideas. Whereas in the Ny River Project, Ny Village Project, they proffered a pattern book and they said, here's what the finished product will look like and we're committed to doing that. So during a crossroads project, you know, that was one of the issues that staff noted with that case is that there was no commitment to the ultimate look and feel of the project and some of those design elements. So other observations, you know, provisions to ensure appropriate scale when adjacent to residential uses. This comes in, like I said, in cases where you have an infill project, you want to protect the adjacent residential uses. The other issue is should the project or the ordinance have a minimum acreage requirement? Meaning, we have a couple of districts where you have to have at least five acres or so to do, to ask for that district. You know, that's something to think about. Other thing is some clarity and the addition of some definitions, just to make it a little bit easier for the development community to use. This ordinance has intended that ultimately the ordinance kind of guides the form of what the project will look like. And so through, like I said, now that we've used it on a couple of projects, we see some areas that could be enhanced to make it easier for engineers who are putting together projects as well as staff and as well as citizens to understand what ultimately that final form will look like, so. So that kind of concludes my remarks. And at this point, we will open it up to you all and.
If, would you characterize Spotsylvania Courthouse Village as the model development for MU type developments?
Let me characterize, I would say that developer has a clear vision of what they want to achieve. And so in that regard, I guess, yes. I mean, they understand what they want to do and they've kind of stuck to it and they've kind of moved forward in that vein.
Yeah, I would agree with you. I think, I like what is, what is, their plan is over there and I think what they're doing is fantastic. I wonder how that can be applied through these rezoning cases to convey or to make sure that this plan is well thought out and that it carries with the property via a proffer so that that consistency or that vision is maintained. That's a concern I have because I do think this is a model type development. And I'm a big fan of mixed uses and I would like to see a little bit more consistency. Getting back to what Mr. Thompson was talking about, I do have a concern with the phasing of residential versus commercial. Every one of these projects, and I understand why, that the residential component gets built out and I'm wanting, quickly, and I understand why, but the commercial always lags behind a little bit. And I'm not saying it has to be rented space or anything like that, but at least I think we need to look at the ratio of residential to commercial through the phasing process or some analysis there, maybe a lessons learned in that regard. Also, am I correct that they've come back, once we've approved these projects, the rezoning, they've come back for some change or something like that? Have we had any of those?
There have been a couple of proffer amendments. I know New Post had some road changes and.
I think New Post, well, actually Courthouse, possibly Courthouse Village has done a proffer amendment as well. If you recall the history of that project, it was originally approved with the village commercial and planned development, commercial zoning classifications, I believe. But they ultimately came back and rezoned to the MU designation because of the flexibility.
Right.
In the New Post case, the amendments ended up being more of a technical nature. The lots out on the river, there was a maximum setback. And so in an effort to take advantage of the river views, they wanted to be able to push the homes further back than the maximum setback allowed, so.
Right. Well, I guess my comment is, is that when we agree to something, they come before us with an application, not necessarily MU, but any rezoning. I get a little concerned when they come back wanting to change things, you know, because we make an agreement on what's presented at the time and it's an understanding that this is what we have, you know, that they're going to use moving forward. And I get a little concerned whether it be a proffer or something else that I'd be interested in some statistics on that, on these rezonings, how many times they come back with additional changes that may impact our decision or could have impacted our decision originally. The other comment I've gotten, I'll turn it over to the rest of the commission, is design standards and more particularly landscaping standards. I get very concerned with our landscaping standards, how they impact site distances and things like that. And it's not just MU, but I'm going to take this opportunity to talk about that, that when we review these plans, especially the landscaping and the emphasis we have on it, that we maintain safety, site distances, those types of things. We have far too many intersections that are dangerous because the landscaping is overgrown. And I will point out an issue over here, that those planters that are in the sidewalks are a problem, in my opinion. You know, the brick planters, they're three or four feet by four feet. They make it tough to walk around that area. I'm a tall guy and I hit my head on the trees all the time. But I just think there's, I don't know if there's some standard we can review to take a look at those types of things. It's kind of into the details, I don't necessarily want to go there. But overall, the design standards, I think, are good. But again, perhaps some lessons learned. We've got five projects now, they're MU. If we could get some lessons learned on, and you made some observations, but at least some good lessons learned moving forward, what we may be able to correct or take advantage of, that'd be great. So with that, if any of the commissions have comments?
So I had a question about, you know, reading over the MU's, you know, one through five. One of the questions I had was, each one of them mentions about the district also includes provision for non-residential... dot, 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 you know, it could be offices, could be whatever. Could somebody come in and request an MU one, for an example, but have not a single bit of non-residential in it? And the reason, you know.
In the MU one?
Yes, it could.
It could.
Yes.
And the reason I ask is because when we start talking about proffers and we start talking about commercial versus residential, I assume, once it has any commercial aspect to it, are we under the rules of it's a commercial project 100%? Or how can we distinguish with the new proffer laws what we can talk about from a proffer perspective or suggest residential versus commercial in that perspective? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think my response to that would be is that we would make suggestions and have a dialogue on the commercial aspects of it and essentially leave the residential component alone. And I would defer to our legal counsel for support, but I think that's how I would approach it, is that, given the new proffer law.
So it's not based off zoning, it's based off of what the uses in that zoning district as far as if it's residential commercials?
That's correct, it's the residential use itself.
Okay. And then, not really a follow-up, but kind of a follow-up. So traffic studies, when we start talking about all that area around Route One, right, Jackson Gateway, what's going across from Pick Apart in that area. When they come in and do their traffic studies, do they then have to take in consideration other already approved but not developed work that's out there and stuff that's coming up that hasn't been approved? They don't take that consideration, or do they?
Well, they have to consider approved developments. And if we know that there is a project that's, say, in the pipeline and is going to potentially be approved, then we typically ask them to look at that as well. If you look at the letter of the law related to the TIA's, then they typically don't. But we don't operate in a vacuum and say, well, it's not there, you know.
But they utilize the comprehensive plan, at least, in their analysis.
Yes, and they have to, they have to count for, like you said, approved developments. And if there's something that we know is going to come, have the potential for approval, we ask them to look at that as well.
And then there's a background growth rate as well.
Right.
Anything else, Mr. Thompson?
Well, we go right back to where I started this thing at. You've got the MU one with non, all residents in it. And it's my opinion that it can't be mixed use without some type of commercial, a gas station or something in there. I mean, it's my opinion, I think MU one, we need to just do away with that. If you want to build housing there, just come in here and tell us you're going to build houses. I think it's a misuse and abuse of our ordinance. If we don't do anything, I'd like to see that changed. I just have a problem with the building houses under mixed-use ordinance and not having any commercial at all. I think that's, that's not what we agreed on, that's not what I thought we were doing when we did this thing back in 2012. In fact, we discussed that at great length.
Yeah. And each of the projects that have come through did have a proffered minimum of non-residential uses, except for, it looks like South Point Landing didn't have a minimum. But each of them did and each of the ones that's in the pipeline will, except for the one that's purely the townhouse infill development on an acre.
I just think it's confusing to use MU on just residents. I think it's just a misuse of the ordinance.
So just for clarification, so if someone, in your opinion, if someone was going to do a residential project, they should use one of the other?
One of the other designations.
Designations, okay.
Leave the MU alone.
Okay.
I'm trying to think if there's any advantage to coming in with an MU zoning just residential. I'm not.
For the developer, yes.
Yeah.
It gives them flexibility.
Do anything that he wants to.
It gives them flexibility.
Greater density.
There's density, yeah, no limitations on density. The project that's coming forward, and I don't want to speak too much, I don't want this in the pipeline, but the infill, the infill projects will benefit the most from the MU designation because of that lack of density, because there are no requirements for open space. So you could maximize a small parcel under the MU district.
Okay.
So that's the advantage.
Yeah, that would be MU one.
Yes.
That would be the correct use of that, not a brand-new thing that they're doing. Because these guys, just like you said, they have a great advantage. They don't have to abide by the rest of the rules that other residential subdivisions have to abide by. They can go in there and cram as much in there as they want and it's all a lot of money. And I just think it's a misuse. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Address a couple of items? Just looking at these cases that have been approved, the mixed-use district came into being and the intent was, what we heard was, we want lots of flexibility, we want the market to drive the development. And so as we expected, we expected the residential to happen first and it is happening first. So that's what we're starting to see with each of these developments. Then the proffer law changed in 2016. So prior to that, this ordinance is very flexible, it doesn't have a lot of requirements for the GDP, we showed you several tonight, you know, there's very little detail. There are not a lot of requirements in terms of what they need to provide us, in terms of detail on architectedals or, you know, any of that type of thing. So we, prior to 2016, we were able to have a dialogue with the developer and really try to understand what is this development going to be, suggest things to them. Now, we are not able to do that when it's got that residential component in it. So it does make it a little more difficult for staff to be able to work with the development community and try to convey to them what we believe might be appropriate proffers for them to include in their package that would satisfy the neighborhood and the community and address impacts. So if the Planning Commission at this point feels like some more detail in these applications is appropriate, staff can take a stab at putting in some more requirements in this ordinance and bringing that back so that it's more similar to our other zoning districts and what you see on generalized development plans for other types of projects.
If I may.
Yes.
Isn't there some ruling about what they present to us is what they're going to do?
It is, but the mixed-use ordinance is, doesn't have all the, yeah, it doesn't have all the same requirements as if you proposed a rezoning in a different district.
Because we were told early on, in fact, I think they made this ordinance right after I came on, they would come in here and show you pictures of stuff they wanted to do, but they wouldn't build any of that.
Right, if they don't proffer it, then we cannot rely on that actually happening.
I don't know why we can't have our own rules, that what you show us is what you're going to do.
Right.
It's fraud if you don't do that.
We can always deny.
Well, that's what we needed to do.
Right.
So if we include more requirements within the ordinance in terms of what we want to see in an application, then that is, they proffer that GDP and then we have that. So rather than a GDP like you saw this evening where you would just have some land bays and some road networks, there'd be more detail as to how that's going to develop. And so, you know, I think that's, you know, the flexibility of this is what has led us to have applications that don't have a lot of detail. And then, of course, they are market-driven and they do have a lot of flexibility as they develop over time, but it may not be ultimately what the county thought was going to happen.
Right.
But if there's anything we can do legally to change that, we need to do it right away. That's just incorrect. That's bait and switch.
So, yeah, so.
It's fraud.
So we can look at the ordinance and propose some additional changes to it for the Planning Commission to consider that would address issues that you've raised this evening.
That would, that would be fantastic.
Yeah, I ask.
Yes, ma'am.
Wanda, where are we with the 70/30 that was adopted quite a while ago? What is happening?
70/30, I don't remember off the top of my head where we are. That's a calculation, actually, that we'd be coming up with very soon. I can get that for you for the next meeting.
Okay. And 2%, where are we with that growth?
Last year, we were at 1.7%. The census projection should be out soon so that I can do a update to it as of July 1st of 2017. But that prior year, we were at 1.7%.
Anything else for the side?
That's it?
If I may.
Yes, sir, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Leon, that was very detailed.
It was, yes.
Extremely professional and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to Ms. Baldwin, I guess you have the floor.
I will read your resolution to go into closed session. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically relating to Planning Commission policies and procedures. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Planning Commissioners do hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution. Can I have a? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very well, the motion passes, we will go into closed session.
Here's your resolution to return to open meeting, which will require a roll call vote. Whereas the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712D, requires a certification by this commission that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Planning Commission hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to go into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
I will take your motion on the resolution.
So approve.
Roll call, Mr. Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Carter?
Aye.
Mr. Bullock? Ms. Maddox?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
1060.
Next on the agenda is any new business? I don't think we have anything this evening. No public comment this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
That's great.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, that's the $111.